Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April seventeenth, sorry, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting the Phoenixville Monthly, sorry, the Phoenixville Borough Council Monthly Council Meeting, both in person and virtually. We're glad you've joined us tonight for this meeting. During the public participation and public hearings portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually, and our staff will unmute you, unmute your microphone and announce your name, allowing you to make comment to the council. We'll start with members of the public who are here in council chambers with us tonight, and then those joining us remotely. We'll have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning, one towards the end. Public participation is limited to once per public participation session, and we do ask that members of the public keep their comments to three minutes or less. Thank you for joining us. We will now begin tonight's Phoenixville Borough Council April meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. And with that, Mr. Crack, if you'd start with roll call.
Mr. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Carmenito. Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Webb. Mr. Weiss.
President.
Mr. Evil.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Manager Assistant Chief Solicitor here. You have a call.
Thank you. I didn't need to make one reorganization on the agenda tonight. Scott, do we have to do this with a motion, or can I just simply reorganize the agenda? Do it with a motion. Okay. Then, in the rarity, I will make the motion to amend the agenda to move item nine D to follow item eleven A, so that we can have a single executive session on both items in the middle of the meeting, rather than going back and forth and back and forth.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. For the record, Ms. Webb is excused absent tonight. She's traveling for work and was unable to join us. So we have seven in the room. With that, I do not know of any presentations. So we will move on to the first round of public participation, again, starting with members of the public who are joining us here in person. Please step to the podium, and you know the drill.
The intersection of Hillmore Street and Fremont Street, on Fremont, there are lines for parking. They're painted at least two hundred yards from the homes. What I'm asking is why East Grand Street cannot have parking lines that cars and trucks must fit into? The state will put up signs. I had the deer crossing signs put up on Black Rock Road. I know it may not be relevant to people parking, but at least they did come out and put up some signs. Why are cars and trucks on East Grand Street permitted to stretch a parking spot? Deliberately make parking difficult? Today, I helped my pregnant neighbor bring in her fruit and vegetables, and she parked at the end of the block. Why can the folks on Emmett Street all get along, yet they must jump the curb, putting stress on their tires and wheels? So they can park it as best they can to get off Emmett Street? With that, I just would like to end and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else in council chambers for public participation for this first round, we will now go to our Zoom platform for any members of the public who are joining us remotely. If you'd like to raise your hand digitally, we'll work through any members of the public that wish to make comment during this first round of public participation.
Mr. Uwald, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay.
Keely, I've turned on your microphone.
Hi, this is Keely Wrigley, twelve South Main Street in Phoenixville. I would like to comment on the one item that's being talked about, that's being discussed today. The parking lot, the main and bridge parking lot, possibly being converted into a park or a common gathering area. Although I love the idea of parks and common gathering areas, I do think that-
If you're trying to make comment, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We will have another round later in the night. We can try again.
Can you hear me now?
Any other members joining us via Zoom that wish to make any comment during the first round of public participation? If you want to go ahead and raise your hand digitally. And I don't see anybody else on Zoom. Anybody else in council chambers? Okay, with that, we'll close the first round of public participation. And we'll go into item five, our consent agenda. Any questions on any of the items under our consent agenda? We're gonna take a quick pause here just to see, because we're- Yeah. That's such a fucking track record of IT issues. It's a good run. That's been done. All right, we're gonna give this a second try now. We believe we have the speaker fixed in the chambers here, so if any members are joining us on the-
Hello?
Yes, Keely, we can hear you now.
Oh, okay, great.
Sorry about that. That's okay. I just wanted to make a comment about the one item that was up for discussion tonight, which was the main and bridge parking lot possibly being converted into a park or a gathering area. I like the overall concept of it, although I think that parking lot is vital to downtown as a parking lot. I know in the twenty seventeen McMahon Group survey of parking in Phoenixville, the main and bridge parking lot was over, it was utilized over eighty-five percent capacity specifically during weekends, during weekdays after five o'clock. Of course, I have a vested interest in the parking lot, as my business is right across the street from it. In Main Street, we also have one of our temporary community events, a whole lot of Lulu that takes place in that parking lot. I have two suggestions. If it's an idea that's going to go full throttle and turn the parking lot into a park, that can the idea of a pop-up park be floated? I've seen these in other towns and other communities where garden centers would sponsor it, and they have temporary flowers and planters and things like that that are kind of movable, or, you know, they're temporarily during bloom season, and then maybe have the parking lot go back to a parking lot in the winter, when there are not that many people out, and the parking lot could better be utilized as parking spaces. And my other comment that I'm just gonna float out there is, I know in years past, there were some ideas being floated around about the beautification of Main Street and having bump outs around Brown's Cow and planters, and also, you know, post lamps similar to that on Bridge Street. Let's not forget about Main Street. Let's not forget about, you know, Gay Street, too. That's my comment. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for bearing with us there. Just to make one comment on that application, in case there's other questions on it, we will be discussing that. There's no design set forth on that. That's a general discussion topic, not a moving forward or not a set in stone topic. With that, any other members of the public joining us via Zoom? All right, seeing none, we will close the first round of public participation. And now we will go into item five, the consent agenda. Any members of council wishing to make any comments or questions about any items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to approve the consent agenda. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And that will open up item six with communications and council participation. Any updates from council? Ms. Berkeley.
Just a few things. I wanted to thank Ant Heart and the Code Blue Center. They ended their season yesterday, April tenth, and they successfully helped free people experiencing homelessness or houselessness, and twenty other people who maybe already have long-term housing or transitional housing, but connected them with other services. They will still, through their SARAH program, be connecting people within our community with service, long-term services. So just wanted to congratulate them on their continued work. Another season, it was their eighth season, I believe, operating, and they have expanded their programming to year-round connecting people with services, so not just that emergency services. April is also Child Abuse Awareness Month. You may see blue pinwheels throughout the community and throughout everything. So just make everyone aware of that, and given not to Barnstone Art, they are an organization that does provide services to those who, children who've experienced trauma. They do have an event this Saturday, the fifteenth, really cool event. And then a reminder to everyone, Dawn, what will be happening next month, May seventeenth to the twentieth, lots of fun things. So check out that website, because there's lots of additions. And when I talk about PAC, I'll have another fun update on that.
Mr. Kirchner.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Just one more thing to add to the events calendar. The Phoenixville Area Social Concerns Committee will hold its twenty-ninth Annual Community Prayer Breakfast Saturday. That's April fifteenth, seven forty-five AM at the Phoenixville Middle School Cafeteria, and they'll be giving out a number of awards, including the Emma Valentine Award of Compassion to Teresa Thornton. I have to do a shout-out for the North Side people. So, and Brian Miller will be the keynote speaker. His topic is heating, God's call to end gun violence. So, tickets for fifteen dollars. They're available through UPC code, or I can send you the email if you want it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Rich. Other comments from council? A couple of things, I just wanted to acknowledge and appreciate the recognition that the Phoenixville Area Chamber of Commerce provided to the borough during their annual awards dinner earlier this month, last month, this last month. They recognized the community improvement project. It was the chairman's award, and it recognized the community improvement projects that the borough has undertaken for the recreation center and the fire and emergency services department. Two vital institutional structures that we've now opened and are important to the community. Second on my list for tonight, we, spring does bring new things, so we want to welcome our brand-new parking lot on one seventy-seven Church Street. It has a shining forty-eight new parking spots, and that is expected to open next week as a paid public lot with sorry, one more week, two weeks, it'll open, come my weeks are wrong here. It'll open as a paid public lot with the Passport app and a kiosk option. Again, two weeks, that's expected to open. And then lastly, we are geared up for another award before our next council meeting, and I just wanted to make mention of this earlier today. GVFTMA sent over recognition that the borough will be recipient to the Public Sector Leadership Award. That is the Greater Valley Forge Transportation Management Association, their charters to improve quality of life by improving transportation options throughout the Montgomery County, Chester County region. And while they're recognizing the entirety of the borough and the work that we've done, I do think that this award largely falls on staff under Gene Crack and Kelly Gottfried. I think they've done, and Brian Watson, they've done a tremendous job on leading edge for pedestrian improvement throughout the borough. So it's an exciting recognition that is being bestowed upon the borough and our achievements on May eighth by GVFTMA. So those are my updates for tonight. Any others from council? Seeing none, we'll close that round, and we'll go to the mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those who are joining us here in person, and those who are virtually joining us. A couple of things happened within the last month since our last Borough Council meeting. Just a shout-out to our fire department. They had an incredible Meet the Easter Bunny event. It was very, very well attended. And even though it was a rainy day, because we have our beautiful new firehouse, there were still lots of hiding places for those eggs and for wonderful little kids to find them throughout the firehouse. So a big shout-out to Diving Cat on their fifteen-year anniversary, which took place within this last month. Also, last month was the Awareness Week for Meals on Wheels. We actually have a number of Meals on Wheels volunteers here within the borough that actually go out every single day, five days a week. And we have three different volunteer routes, and they deliver meals to over forty-five different residents here within the borough, and that's every single day, Monday through Friday, are delivering hot meals and cold breakfasts. So thank you to all of those volunteers and certainly to that service. Also, we had an incredible last weekend. We had a great Easter egg hunt, which was put on by the Phoenixville Borough Parks and Recreation, Communities That Cares, as well as the Phoenixville J.C.'s. So thank you so much to all of those organizations for doing that. The Domestic Violence Center of Chester County came out in conjunction with Orion Communities, Phoenixville Community Health Foundation, and the Phoenixville Police Department. You'll see the blue ribbons, which are out on the light poles in downtown, and that's for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Upcoming, so upcoming in this next month, on the thirteenth, a shout-out to our friends at Cub Scout PAC seventy-three on their blue and gold banquet. The Phoenixville Area High School is having a theater production of The Addams Family on the fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth of this month. On the sixteenth of this month, we have Walk a Mile in Her Shoes, which is to bring about awareness around domestic violence and sexual assault awareness. We have a lacrosse fundraiser also on the fifteenth of this month, which is taking place at the Polish Club. On the sixteenth, which is a Sunday, the Sir Optimists of Phoenixville is having a fashion show at River Crest. And also, I forgot something on the fifteenth, very important. Brown Cow is opening for the season, so Warren's Brown's Cow's ice cream on Main Street is opening, so make sure you stop in and get your ice cream. That, of course, is usually in conjunction with Tax Day, which this year falls on April eighteenth, so make sure you get those taxes in. On the twenty-ninth, we have a whole lot of Loo in the main and bridge street parking lot, an incredible vintage flea market, and just kind of a fun flea market of all kinds. And on the thirtieth, we want to wish all of our students who are, or I guess the night of the twenty-ninth into the thirtieth, we want to wish all of our students from the Phoenixville Area High School who are attending prom, a happy and safe prom. On the thirtieth, we have, which is a Sunday of April, it's Paint the Town Purple, which is part of the American Cancer Society, of course, Relay for Life. And we also have the Clinic Field Day, the free clinic here for uninsured and underinsured, and that takes place on St. Mike's Field. They're still looking for teams, so if you're interested, check out the clinic's website. On the sixth of May, we have the football team fundraiser at Bingo, at the Kimberton Fire Hall, and also a Wish Upon a Star fundraiser, which is taking place right at our Parks and Recreation Center, right on the North Side. So other than that, we are starting to see all of our events come up, so thank you all so much for being involved and making this an incredible place to live.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, item eight on tonight's agenda, we have our monthly call for residents interested in being appointed to various boards and commissions. We currently have vacancies existing on zoning hearing board, recreation board, HARB, and Human Relations Commission. We do thank, during our consent agenda, we did fill one of our vacancies, and I welcome aboard Mr. Book and his willingness to volunteer. Again, if you're interested in serving on any of our boards or committees or commissions, please reach out to your councilperson. They'll gladly walk you through the process. It is simple and painless. With that, we'll move on to tonight's section nine of tonight's agenda under New Business. With item A, we have, due to a scheduling conflict, we did not hold a finance committee meeting, so we have two finance items up for consideration for council to consider. And the first one was a fund balance transfer from restricted to general for the demolition of one seventy-seven Church Street. It's council's pleasure.
I'll make the motion. Do you want me to read the whole thing, or is that close enough?
That's close enough.
I'm so moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. A motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Ms. Berkeley. And that is a budget increase in the amount of one eighty-two, four ninety, from restricted fund balance to the general capital fund, project fund, and this is to demolish the church, the Church Street firehouse. So any questions on the motion?
Yes, on this one, and also on the next item. Were these items put out to bid?
We actually went through Co-Stars. That was a good question. Seeing none, all those in- KPM. KPM. Same thing, it's just KPM's the construction. Got it. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item B, that normally would have gone through finance, was the two hundred thousand dollars for the parking, from parking fund balance to parking, and that was for the milling and paving of aforementioned one seventy-seven Church Street. What is council's pleasure on this item?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Dugan makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the motion? And this is the soon-to-open-in-two-weeks parking lot at one seventy-seven Church Street. Seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next, under New Business, item C, this is to participate in a drug, the opioid liability settlement. We've taken part in some of these in the past. This is one that has a deadline coming up, I believe. And Scott, if you want to give us a little background on this one, actually?
Sure. As you know, as a part of the opioid epidemic, the federal government and the states, many of the state governments have got together and pursued some of the pharmaceutical companies and distributors. You may remember participating in a settlement with some of the pharmaceutical companies probably two and a half years ago at this point. And there is now a somewhat national settlement being proposed with some of the distributors. So you'll see that this proposed settlement is with Tiva, Allergen, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. Basically, how it works is the federal government and the participating states negotiate these settlements for billions of dollars. And then there are disbursements to each county based on the number of municipalities in each county that participates. So we need to participate in order to receive any of the settlement funds that can be used for public projects. If we, by agreeing to enter the settlement, we are basically giving up our right to sue on the behalf of the borough ourselves. It, it's really a beneficial use of funds to join these state and federal litigation and settlements, because to try to take on some of these companies ourselves would be probably
certainly felt the impact. Okay, so we need a motion to consider this?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Should carry seven zero. As mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we're moving item D down, item D of section nine down to just below item A of section eleven, so we'll get to that in just a moment. We'll move on to section ten of tonight's agenda, which is resolutions and ordinances. We have four items to entertain, and what is council's pleasure on the first item here?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution in support of the submission of a Chester County Department of Community Development, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, Community Revitalization Program grant application for the reconstruction of the intersection of Bridge Street and Star Street.
Second. A motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Carmenito. As this was just discussed in committee, CD, sorry, DCD decided to do a two-year cycle, so some of these items were applying for possibly a little early than we normally would. They used to be annual grants, and now they're on a two-year cycle, so trying to get in on it. What is, any other questions on the motion?
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Crack, so is this, are these streets purely borough streets, or any state streets, Bridge and Star?
Bridge and Star is fifty percent of the intersection is state highway, and fifty percent of the intersection would be
So then the ultimate redesign of this will have to at least be fifty percent.
The entire project will have to go through a process. Mr. Crack.
Yes. If we could, Mr. President, could we get a little bit more information about, or the education of the public about what this improvement involves?
Sure, I'll start it off. We've been talking about this in infrastructure for a little while now, and the better part of a few years, actually. The intersection, when the bank building was built, was what used to be Customers' Bank. That was supposed to be a four-way intersection originally. Well, not originally. When the bank building was built, the intent was to add a fourth leg there. So the redesign that we're pursuing, and we've received some funding for, is to add that fourth leg, so the traffic would be able to travel further north through the intersection, and then add improved turning lanes heading northeast from Star onto Bridge, particularly allowing larger vehicles like the trucks and the buses that frequently smack our signs and jump the curb there. It will also add a sidewalk all the way up to the historic train station to provide better access, since we own that stretch of land directly adjoining the southeast corner of that intersection. I think that's the nuts and bolts.
Close. Sure, it's a little over a two-million-dollar project, Mr. Kirchner. We had set aside seven hundred and fifty thousand of that in our restricted funds. We applied for funding through the MTF program, Multi-Mole Transportation Fund. Two weeks ago, we received notification, we got six hundred thousand from that. This grant application then is to the county under the Community Revitalization Program for nine hundred and fifty thousand to get us into balance with the estimated cost of the project.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Taking us to item B, we have a similar motion for DCD. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution in support of the submission of a Chester County Department of Community Development, twenty-two to twenty-three Community Revitalization Program grant application for the conversion of the existing bridge and Main Street parking lot into a park and gathering location.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on this motion? And this is one of the projects we've discussed in infrastructure. And because of the new two-year cycle the DCD has implemented for their CRP grant, this is one that we're looking to get ahead of for possible design, and I, yeah, concept, the main bridge part.
Yes. And I received a couple of emails about it. I see other council members nodding their head. I think you clarified very nicely after the public comment, but just to reiterate, this is to apply for the grant to work towards a project like this. This is not shutting down the parking lot at- This is not shutting down the parking lot at this point. This is not committing to a design. This is looking to apply for grant funds to explore this project. Correct? Just so everybody is aware of that. And what we have loosely discussed in infrastructure, I'm in as chair of that committee, is that it would be something that could be used as a town square. We've talked about lots of different ideas. It's something that could be very versatile. So it wouldn't just be like, once we do it, it's set in stone that it has to be one thing. We talked about it being something that could through the seasons be versatile, but we're not rubber stamping any design at this point. We're just looking at moving forward with a grant that could potentially help us explore that. Correct? Just for clarification to the public.
There, well, there is a little bit. We are going to pursue construction funding. The goal is, again, to Mr. Ewaltson and your point, this is the grant is switched over to a two-year program. So if you think about that, we could be two, three, or four years out before we actually were able to do something. So we talked this over with the county and interestingly enough, they, they actually suggested that we do this in this somewhat nebulous application that we come in and we say, we're looking at doing this, get an engineer's estimate if we were to just in totality convert the lot, what that would entail. Have you, again, we're applying, but everybody recognizes that you haven't signed off on anything. Committees haven't signed off on anything. We're just trying to keep ourselves in the application window of eligibility. Before we would move forward with anything and before we would sign any documents, council would have to sign off on whatever it is. We're just keeping our option open with the county. So I thought to lose a two-year window.
If you don't apply now for this, you won't be, if there's any other funds that could be allocated towards a second project or the second year of the project, you're not eligible to apply. So that's the other piece of this. If you don't apply now, you know, it's a two-year cycle. They can open that up for another round, but if you did not put the initial application in, you cannot go for the second funding round of that.
That's a good point and to clarify. So we apply for funding in this and we decide this is not where we want to go. Because we applied this year, we could change the skill and repurpose the application in the second year. So that gives us two different ways to stay in the, in the funding stream of the county.
Well, thank you for that, because that was another question I had. If we applied with this intention, but wanted to shift our focus for a different downtown improvement, that is something that's doable within that grant cycle. So that's really great information. I think good to know that, you know, if we don't work with that in, as we go through committee, but we did get the, get awarded the grant, we can look at changing that up. So that's important information for us to know and then also for the public to know that that's more versatile as well. And then I would just say, because I've gotten to be part of a very mild discussion, we have not dove deep into this. If the public wants to follow this discussion, come to infrastructure and give your input, share your ideas, because that's something that this very detailed. But I do appreciate all the efforts being made to secure grant funding and get ahead of it.
So, so I'm, I'm a little lost here. So we're talking about applying for a grant for something that we don't know that we want to do.
Well, in committee, we think we've discussed it and liked the concept. So this would provide that next step of design and everything that we fully vet what it is. There's, there's not a set design and there's not money spent on design and engineering.
So, so this is for a feasibility study or?
No, this, this wouldn't, could or would cover everything.
Okay, but we don't know an amount for the grant yet. It was zeros in the draft resolution. The maximum awarded you can apply for would be for a million dollars. That's not what this is going to be. So the 25%, the maximum commitment by tonight, you would be committing to, if we were to do something, the maximum commitment would be 250,000. If the project comes in at $500,000 and it's one that you want to do, then of course your commitment is 125,000 towards them. And that's usually in the realm of design, engineering, construction management. The key here is, as I tried to try to explain, is we're trying to keep our options open so we don't lose two rounds of grant funding opportunity. The fact that we did discuss it in infrastructure committee with an idea of a conversion of the one was something that gave us a window to have a discussion with the county who liked the idea. Also is not exactly sure what it would be, but said to us, you don't get anything if you don't apply. And if you do apply and you change your mind and you want to apply the next year for something different, because either you didn't get funded for it in the first year of the two-year window, or you change your mind, you have that opportunity. If we don't do anything, it'll be 2025 before. Okay, if I may raise a couple of points. One, I, I, I've been around so long. I remember when that wasn't a parking lot, when it was a former WT Grants store. And it became a parking lot because a number of business people in the community got together. They decided to create a special services district. I believe it was the 100 and 200 and 100 and 200 blocks of Bridge Street and maybe the unit block of Main Street that were in that district. They, you know, paid an extra property tax for a number of years to pay off the acquisition and an improvement of that lot. So I, one, I, I wonder if that's deed restricted in any way. And I would encourage researching that deed before going too far down the rabbit hole. Two, I mean, I, I don't know. People don't, people don't like when things are taken away from them. And parking is one of those things people really don't like having taken away from them. So I, I think this, you know, this is sort of not a germ of an idea, but it's beyond, beyond that, but it, but it hasn't quite bubbled up to where it's, it's a full-blown proposal. And I don't know. I just, I, I, I just can't, I just can't get my head around this for now. So.
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. I think the things that I'm considering as I'm mulling this over. One, what kicked the conversation off was the creation of a new parking lot with more spots than, than this parking lot has nearby. So that's what kind of, that's where the nexus of the conversation started. So we would still have a net gain of parking spots in the downtown area, not exactly where they are now. So that started the conversation and then the piece that I'm really taking away from the conversation that we've had tonight is, I think this leaves us with lots of options open, but closes no options and commits us to nothing in particular. So those are the big takeaways that I'm, I'm considering. So thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six one. Item C on section 10, we have a motion to adopt a resolution in support of a DCNR grant for the Princeville Creek, sorry, Phoenixville French Creek Trail Extension. What is council's pleasure for this grant application?
Sir, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution in support of the submission of the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources C2P2 grant application for the French Creek Trail Extension, Phoenixville French Creek.
Second, Alex. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this grant application for more trails? This would connect Paradise Street to right behind us here.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. What, so the grant, it would specify, does a grant application have to specify, you know, how big and the size of what you're reporting? So we would be, we would be, that's the purpose is that the extension of the trail to Paradise. So the, the extension of the trail, we have all of the, put this in post, the land area between Borough Hall and Paradise Street. However, unbeknownst to us, when we negotiated the lease, I mean, the easement agreement, Tag Lumber, after item, again, there is a 225, 230-foot area that fell away back into the creek, which took away the land mass that would make the connection between where we were coming in from the Borough Hall side to connecting to the fire station side. So this grant is primarily focusing in on the cost to restabilize that section of property on the Tag Lumber side that has to be done because we can't make that connection short of seeking additional land mass much further in the Tag Lumber side. The idea is to engineer the refurbishment of that bank area, the 230-ish feet with stone and the right amount of mass that we can then put stone and blacktop on top of that make the connections. So the vast majority of this grant application is to cover those costs.
Just, just to add to that, we so applied for DCNR funding through a special round last fall for the same project. We were not funded that project because it was actually too small, the project. They were looking for a little bit bigger projects to do. So this is their normal round of their C2P2 grant. So this is something that we've already have money restricted for this project. So this is just allowing us to apply for more funding to try to bridge that gap of what we need.
Any other questions on this, on item, sorry, item 10C? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Lastly, under section 10D, we have a consideration for our Bridge Street extension of food and alcohol.
Yep, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution temporarily permitting outdoor sales of food and merchandise of existing businesses on the 100 and 200 blocks of Bridge Street during warm weather weekends.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Carmenito. Questions on this motion?
So, so warm weather weekend. So this is essentially parallels with the, the closure which we voted for before. And it's just because we normally do not permit this? Or I was just kind of wondering why we have this.
And Kelly can probably answer that one.
So with the, with the permit itself that we have for our outdoor inside-out program, this allows for the sale within the, within their confines of the closure. That's something that's not allowed on a, you know, December 15th night. It has to be within the season itself.
And this is our fifth year doing this. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. She carries seven zero. I'll need a motion to adjourn into a recess. Can't just adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion I missed. Well, Scott take this.
Let me, let me finish the motion. I would entertain a motion to recess the public meeting and reopen the continued hearing on the conditional use applications submitted by landlord LP and Arnold Anderson related to an automobile sales and services use in 700 Nut Road, Suite 540.
So.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries zero. As council knows, this hearing was opened and commenced at council's last meeting on March 14th, 2023. The application relates to an automobile sales and services use at 700 Nut Road, Suite 540 within Phoenixville Plaza, being a property located in the CD Corridor Development Zoning District, which uses permitted upon conditional use approval in accordance with section 27-301, 2A1 of Borough zoning ordinance. Exhibit and testimony were presented by the borough and applicant. No other parties came forth and the public was permitted to provide public comment at that time. During the hearing last month, the hearing was continued on the record to this evening. At this time, the record is closed and no more background or testimony will be provided. With that, I would briefly turn the hearing over to Mr. Anderson if he would like to make any closing statements. But the record reflect that Mr. Anderson has indicated no closing statements. With that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and adjourn to executive session to discuss the application and a matter of personnel.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I'm sorry, recess.
Then, so.
So, man. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Motion carries.
We will be back.
And we are returning from executive session at eight, sorry, 8:18. Mr. Weiss, did you have a?
Yes, can I make a motion to resume the public meeting?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley to resume the public meeting. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Carry seven zero. And coming out of executive session, we have two motions or two items to consider.
Start.
Mr. Carmenito.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that the Phoenixville Borough Council approve the conditional use application of hardware, landlord LP and Arnold Anderson for the automotive, automobile sales and services use on 700 Nut Road, Suite 540, subject to the following conditions. One, no customers of the automobile services use shall enter the service area of the premises unless accompanied by an employee or agent of the automobile services use. Two, the automobile services use shall comply with the requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance and may include routine maintenance, general repairs, oil changes, inspection, and tire sales and replacements, among other general automotive repair services, but shall not include any sale of motorized vehicles, major automotive body repairs, or painting. Three, the shared wall of the premise with the remaining portion of the structure on the property shall remain a full-height, demising wall as long as the automobile, automobile services use remains active. Any waste oil left outside the premises overnight by customers shall be cleaned up immediately upon opening the following morning and disposed of in accordance with applicable environmental laws and industry-specific best practices and as provided in this decision. Four, all fluid waste shall be separated according to industry standards and stored and secured inside the property and locked during non-operational hours in purpose-made and designated drums and containers and disposed as often as reasonably necessary by a certified and licensed hazardous chemical waste removal company. Five, the premises floors shall be capped. Any spill of hazardous or regulated materials shall be immediately cleaned up and remediated according to all applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations, including, without limitation, environmental and OSHA laws. And no material shall be escape, allowed to escape from the premises. The floor of the premises shall be returned to all a fully clean and compliant condition by use of industry-standard methods such as spill kits, oil dry, and motorized floors. Six, in the event of hazardous materials do escape the premises into the surrounding parking lot, the applicant shall use the impacted area to steam clean and otherwise remediate, remediate it in accordance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, including but not limited to environmental law. Seven, all customer vehicles shall be pulled in and out of the premises by employees of the automobile services use. Customers shall park their vehicles and then provide keys to their vehicle to employees of the automobiles, automotive services use. Customers shall be encouraged to utilize the parking area directly in front of the premises. No customer shall be permitted to pull their vehicles up to or in and out of the building of the premises. Further, no queuing of vehicles waiting to enter the premises shall be permitted to block the sidewalk and/or drive aisle directly in front of the premises. Eight, discarded and removed tires shall be stored in a tire enclosure located to the rear of the property while waiting removal from the property for disposal. The tire enclosure shall be located in any area that does not increase the overall tracks and previous coverage and does not negatively impact vehicular circulation and loading. To the extent that discarded tires exceed the capacity of the designated tire enclosure, all additionally discarded tires shall be stored in the interior of the building utilized for the automobile services use. At no time shall tires be stored externally from the building unless the tire, unless. At no time shall tires be stored externally from the building unless the tire enclo- unless in the tire enclosure. The tire enclosure shall be emptied as often as reasonably necessary. Nine, applicant shall maintain the existing American with Disabilities Act ADA compliant parking spaces in the common area parking lot. Ten, applicant shall consider adding additional parking spots, stop signs, and striping along the property and in the common area parking lot. Eleven, all ti- at all times during the operation of the automobile services use the existing reciprocal easement agreement and any agreement there too shall be in place to provide sufficient parking and access for the automobile services use as required by the borough zoning ordinance. Twelve, nothing in the decision and order of the Borough Council on this application shall be construed as either an express or implied waiver of any provision of applicable ordinance of the Borough of Phoenixville, no level of development is guaranteed by virtue of this conditional approval and the proposed improvements shall be permitted only if the fully engineered plans for the property can demonstrate compliance with all local zoning, land development, subdivision regulations of the borough, as well as any relevant statutes or regulations of any other government entity having jurisdiction over development on the property. Thirteen, all development prevented by this conditional use shall be consistent with the testimony exhibits submitted to the Borough Council at the hearings held on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three and this evening, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
A lengthy motion by Mr. Carmenito, seconded by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion, this is the conditional use approval for seven hundred Nut Road, questions on the application, the general project, the motion. Uh, the one thing I would just like to acknowledge, understanding that, uh, well, in the conditional use agreement, we can't compel additional sidewalk features, I would like to implore the landowner to make, uh, additional considerations on striping sidewalks and pedestrian accessibility, I think it furthers the economic benefits of all the tenants and in the shopping center that's nice and full now, so. Well, that's not an official part of the conditional use, it is something I would like to continue to implore. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven, zero. And our second item coming out of our many executive session tonight.
Mr. President, I'm for council to approve the resignation of Officer Knapp upon the terms and conditions of a settlement agreement subject to the negotiation and recommendation of terms by the Borough Labor Council and further approving Borough Council President to execute any documents necessary to affect this.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven, zero. And with that, we move on to section twelve, reports of committees, boards, and committees, I'm sorry, committees, boards, and commissions. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Moore on planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, our next, uh, I already reported on the March meeting in the previous, uh, Borough Council uh, March session, because they planning preceded it, uh, so our next, um, there's no action tonight from planning commission. Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for this coming, uh, Thursday, the thirteenth. Uh, I'd just like to alert the, uh, the public and my public members of the council that uh, due to the number of event, uh, projects that are in front of the planning commission. The, uh, it's been decided that there will be a hard stop at nine PM. You know, session starts at six, six PM, and if, uh, any of the projects that are currently on the agenda, uh, have not been dealt with, uh, there will be a second, uh, planning commission meeting on, uh, Thursday, April twentieth, the following week, also at six PM. And all planning mission members and those who are appearing in front of it are been notified of this, so. That's our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, we'll move on to his, uh, card with Ms. Dugan.
There are no applications this month.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkner with Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee.
Yeah, we actually have things, uh, happening in regional planning. Uh, one is news out of Skookle Township, plans have been submitted for a new Wawa on the northwest corner, I think it's the northwest corner of, uh, White Horse and Nut Roads. They call it a super Wawa, but having been going to Wawas for over fifty years now, I think they're all super, so. Uh, second item, the Regional Planning Committee granted a letter of consistency for a new elementary school that the Phoenixville Area School District is building at Harris Hill. Philip Harris Hill Road, Skookle Road, that's seven twenty-four Ridge Road, Route twenty-three. It's a hundred five thousand square feet, twenty-nine and a half acres. We did make some suggestions for providing pedestrian bike crosswalks on Harris Hill Road, EV accommodations and public spaces. Integration with the convenient multi-modal trail and, uh, improvement of bicycle access along Ridge Road, Route twenty-three. It includes a, a large solar arrays, a, a lot of, uh, solar. The, there was discussion about making it even more environmentally uh, energy efficient, but apparently, uh, according to members from East Pike Lynn, the State Department of Environmental Protection discouraged the use of geothermal energy on the site because it is a former apple orchard. The soil has trace amounts of cyanide in it, cyanide is in apple seeds. Um, and the state determined that sinking geothermal wells there would threaten the water table in that area. Finally, uh, number three, and, and this may be the big story on Action News, uh, not, not really, but, uh, a big story coming out of the Regional Planning Committee at the boundary of West Pike Lynn and Euclid Townships, a massive shipping center has been proposed. Uh, no, it hasn't been proposed, it's in the early stages of discussion. Uh, consists of four buildings, one point six million square feet of space, parking for something like three hundred plus big rigs. It's reportedly the management company that's handling this has placed Amazon Centers, Amazon Distribution Centers previously, so, um, it's worth watching, it needs a whole lot of approvals. It's at the headwaters of the Pickering Creek, so there are a lot of environmental issues. It's, it's right up against the Turnpike, apparently they're trying to get a slip ramp there, it's on a parcel. It's Lionville Station Road, which is right across the street from where the regional plan, uh, group ends. Right across the side street from Tractor Supply, if any, but any of you know. What that's, what's out there. I, interestingly, the Downingtown Area School District owns a piece of that property, bought it for twenty-two million a number of years ago, would sell it for ninety-four million. According to West Pike Lynn representatives, so. Like I said, it needs multiple layers of approval before it gets legs, but it's worth watching because this could have a massive impact on the region, so. Just wanna get it out there, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkner. We'll bounce back to Ms. Dugan with rec board.
Okay, it's that time of year, so there's a lot going on, so we'll start with, um, this coming weekend, uh, then. It's the nineteenth, um, and every third Wednesday, just starting on April nineteen from five thirty to six thirty, there's a blood pressure and screening that you can just go, just drop in, um, there'll be a nurse on site to help you with that. Uh, the Safe Sitter Program, um, is on April twenty-second from ten AM to four, that's for grade six to eight. Um, the Self-Defense Clinic, which is another free, um, program. They're doing that, uh, this Saturday, April fifteenth, from twelve to two. Or if you're not interested in self-defense that day, you can instead go to the yoga retreat, which is a fun afternoon of activities and vendors for adults and kids, and that's going on on the fifteenth from twelve to three. There's the Youth Pickball, uh, Clinics, Nashville Pickleball and Jarhead Pickleball, different times and different dates, you can always check the website for the information there. Uh, Fundamentals of Tennis, that starts in May and there's a second session that starts in June. T-Birds and T-Ball, um, that one is starting, um, April fifteenth as well. And then there's for the adults, we've got Circuit Class and a, it's a body conditioning that involves endurance training resistance. And there's also the Strength Core and Flexibility. Now, both of those, one is on Mondays and one of those, one of them's on Thursdays, again, go to the, uh, the website for all of the details. And finally, there's a couple workshops for yoga or another form of yoga, Chinese healing practice. And, um, the first one, one of the yoga workshops starts, uh, April twelfth, which I suppose is tomorrow, from six to seven, and there's one on April twenty-third, and the other one starts April twenty-first to May twelfth. And, uh, I think that's all we have. Make sure you check out the website, there's so much stuff going on.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. And Ms. Berkeley with Tac.
Uh, I just wanna highlight that our spring planting that the Tac organizes would be on Earth Day, so that is Saturday, April twenty-second. Um, and then I think I mentioned this last time, but just to reiterate, there are a number of trees that the state is mandating we take down. Um, but we do have a vigorous, um, plan to replace those trees with dogwoods and cherry, cherry blossom trees, gene. So I'm very excited to announce that, going back to tradition, at the end of the Dogwood Prairie, we will be planting a Dogwood, um, at Graves Park. An old tradition, if, if you read up on the history, I'm excited about that.
And Ms. Berkeley with, uh, personnel and public safety?
Nothing, um, Major, you did mention, um, in the consent agenda, we did appoint, uh, Christopher Book to HRC. Um, that committee now will have two vacancies, and I believe we still need one so that they have farm, is that correct, Mr. Correct? They now have farm, okay, awesome. Um, so we do have the two, as Mr. Ewald did review, one on zoning hearing, uh, one on rec board and one on farm. Again, see your council member, see me, I'm pretty friendly, um, and you would come through our committee for that.
Mr. Moore with Parks and Rec.
Um, all major items were dealt with in, uh, from the most previous meeting in the consent agenda. So I'll just note that our next meeting is Tuesday, the eighteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkner stepped out of the room for policy, but there was not a, a meeting this month due to scheduling conflict, so. Uh, we'll go to Mr. Weiss with ITTS.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, uh, lots going on, lots of exciting stuff, uh, our NEO project is still, uh, chugging along and we're getting ready to do a ribbon cutting at some point, hopefully in the near future. Um, as mentioned earlier, we're talking about lots of interesting things, so please come and visit us, our next meeting is um, April eighteenth at seven PM, one week from tonight, um, but other than that, no, uh, no updates this evening, thank you.
And Ms. Dugan with Finance.
There was no meeting last month.
Thank you. With that, we will, uh, open up section, see fourteen, but our second and final round of public participation, any members of the public who are joining us via Zoom, if you want to raise your hand digitally, and any members of the public who are joining us here in council chambers, uh, if you missed the beginning, uh, introduction, members joining us via Zoom, if you want to hand, raise your hand digitally, we'll, um, we'll call on you as, uh, as selected in order. Uh, we will start with anybody in the room tonight, but I don't see anybody racing to the podium, so, uh, Ms. Logan, if you can work through the Zoom queue.
Mr. Luffy, turn on your microphone.
Hello. My name is Stephen Luffy, I live at nine Diana Drive. Uh, and my, uh, topic of conversation is regarding the Phoenix Center, I've actually spoken with the Director of Code Enforcement on this, and I feel like he's not properly issuing a notice of violation, uh, in, with regards to one of the nuisance controls for the lighting. I can go into more detail if needed, um, but. Yeah, I mean, pretty much, I just would like to get into contact with someone on the, on the council who, who I can talk to about this, because uh, the Director of the Code Enforcement has no longer, is no longer responding to my emails.
Sure, I, uh, Steve, if you want to just email me, it's, uh, JEWald@Phoenixville.org. And then I'll make sure it gets the right council person, because I'm, just wanna make sure you're putting in the right place.
Okay, alright. Uh, that works, uh, I mean, did, do we need, do, do we need me to go into any further detail or not, just send an email about everything and, and we'll go from there?
Let's just communicate by email and we'll get you squared away.
Alright, thank you.
Absolutely. I've seen no other hands on the Zoom platform and nobody in the room, we'll close the second and final round of participation. Any other communications or council participation?
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
We will now be adjourning into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and litigation, we will not be returning for any votes, so we will be back, uh, at the May meeting. All of the upcoming, uh, meetings are listed on the back of the agenda for anybody who's joining us here for May and the rest of April, thank you very much and good night.